Call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is introductions. Would you like to start?
Sure. I'm Jessica Cobb. I am with the Finnegan Valley County Government. I'm their senior planner.
Well, welcome to the planning board.
Thank you.
Jean Lancaster, the chair.
Charlotte Cardin, secretary.
I'm Richard LaBelle, our manager.
Ed Avery, CEO.
Jack Farren, final member.
Johnny, I didn't even remember.
Okay, next we'll review and approve the minutes of the meeting on November 14. I'm sorry, Margaret, would you like to introduce yourself?
Oh, Margaret O'Connell, planning board member. Thank you, Jean.
I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
Okay. Do I have an emotion to accept the minutes?
All right, so move. Second it.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Yeah. A roll call.
Oh, roll call, okay. John?
Yes.
Chuckie?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Charlotte? Yes.
Yes, that's everyone. Our next item on the agenda is discussion in action on a proposed subdivision modification merging lots one and two in the redcoats past subdivision.
There is no objection. I didn't know if the person which was to be here tonight, they have not. And so since you're paying now to be consultant, I would recommend pull the continued business forward.
Okay. In that case, then we'll turn to Jessica for discussion on shoreland zoning ordinance update.
Did everyone get a chance to look at the red lines ordinance? I mean, it doesn't matter if you go through it anyway.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I did.
Okay, so the changes, the primary changes you could see in the table of contents. Um, the effective date of the ordinance, I don't think that needs to be in there. At the very first ones, the A and B under effective date, that's not something that's I don't think that needs to be called out the way it was in your past ordinance. And if you all are good with it, once we go through this and accept all the changes and it's a final product, I think it'd be really useful to put page numbers in here. I don't know. Some of them don't have them and I don't know what the reason is, but so if everybody's good with removing the effective date of the ordinance and amendments and be sections 15N and 15N1, I'll accept that change.
Are we going to vote on this one change at a time or at the end? We'll, okay, very good, thanks.
So next would be, they added, since the last revision, they added non-conforming lots under non-conformance. That's, um, I'm just going through the table of contents and we'll work through everything. The other's just a word change. Apparently they changed the word and what's capitalized and that's not substantial. On the next page, the other thing that was added, the other things that were added were hazard tree, storm damaged trees and dead tree removal and exemptions to clearing and vegetation removal requirements and re-vegetation requirements. So those are new additions. All right. The next change would be on page three. This ordinance also applies to structures built on over, over or abutting a dock or or pier. Does everybody see that sentence?
Yeah.
Okay. So, everybody's good with that and doesn't have questions? So the notes, um, in the, well, I don't think I took that, um, the chapter 1,000 guidelines, there's no reason to leave the notes in here. It's explaining how you can, the options for setting up your ordinance. I put them in here for you guys to look at, but for clarity, for when the public, when this is a finished product, when the public's reviewing this, I don't think they're necessary or useful to leave in there. Are you guys good with taking them out? Okay.
Yes, I am.
Okay. So, the approval date will need to be updated once this is all said and done. In this paragraph, any application for permit submitted to the municipality within 45 day, within the 45 day period shall be governed by the terms of this ordinance or ordinance amendment. If the ordinance or ordinance amendment is approved by the commissioner, that's a new piece that was added. And the two that are redlined out, um, that was part of what I took out of the table of contents. Is something that's, I don't know if that was something from the old ordinance or what, but it's no longer in the chapter 1,000 guidelines. Am I going too fast?
No, but I, excuse me, I have a question on the effective date side section.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be just simpler to say it's effective upon adopted by the municipal legislative body? You call it quits because there's going to be a severability clause at the end, I would assume. And then so if
Are you talking about the sentence where I have the comment letter of approval?
No, I'm talking about that whole paragraph.
Oh.
Right, because it's the, it would become effective if it was adopted by the legislative body, being town meeting, remove the date because that's, you know, you don't want to update your ordinance.
Yes, I agree.
Based upon that. And then you've got a severability clause hopefully at the end. And if we don't, then we need, no, no, it's down to section six.
Section six.
So if it wasn't approved by the commissioner, then it would become null and void or the sections would be. So it just seems cleaner to remove all of that wasted language.
Love it.
Thanks.
So effective upon adoption by the legislative body?
Mm-hmm.
Um, these minor changes under seven and eight, but there, it's like literally just switching words out. It's not a big deal. On page five, they just added shoreline to official zoning map. And again, the note changed from the last time, but if everybody read that, I can, I'll delete those. Not probably right now because it's, I don't want to take up the time. These changes under, um, 12B are just a matter of formatting, how the chapter 1,000 guidelines had the new version of this written. It's not, it's just not capitalized. It's not that big of a change. That stuff I probably should have gone through and just done before talking to you all about it, but I wasn't sure.
Have you thought about a definition for repair or maintenance in the future? Have you guys spoken about that at all?
No, um, I don't know if the state has, is there not one?
No, there is not.
Um, that would be like, yeah. That's something that should
It leaves a lot up to interpretation.
It does, you're right. Do you have ideas for what it ought to be?
Um, I kind of do, but I don't have anything formally. It would be, in my opinion, it'd be something that would be a repair would be, you know, you're changing out treads on your staffs or you're having to replace siding on or anything of that nature, something simple opposed to a, you know, full blown, I'm tearing down my deck and I'm replacing my deck and
So I worked on, um, I think it was Fairfield's ordinance and I, I think I defined it under that. Do you, I'm going to get you a definition and share it with you and you can kind of see how you like it?
Sure.
Okay. Is that okay if I just send it to you and you pass it along? So non-conforming, the definition of ex, or the, the expansion part changed. Um, essentially, I think it says the same thing, it just expands on it. Expands on, on expansion, um. I don't know if everybody got a chance to read that and compare it to what was redlined out.
It's all fair and the boil of plate language.
It is, yeah. It's all directly from the chapter 1,000 guidelines. What I did is made a comparison document and change. Made all the
To show the changes.
Yeah.
I like that.
So if everybody's good with that, we can go on. So I think these are the same type of thing. It was just written differently before. I don't remember them being significant. I think it's just written differently. It's, it's boilerplate.
Could, could you explain to me the difference between A and B as to why?
Are you talking about like
On page seven.
On page seven?
Yeah, just that I, after reading A, then going to B, I was just confused as to why, why B would even pertain. I mean, I would there's, um, because it's legally existing non-conform, non-conforming?
I think B has to do with the foundation that's going to go underneath if you're going to do that opposed to A, it doesn't deal with the foundation part.
Okay.
But she, uh, but they have on B, they've also put it back and it's under foundations on their new type of wording. It would be under section two. So they still capture that. It's just on the next page on two.
Yeah, it references C1. Yeah, I think you're right. It just
See, what you're talking about there is you basically took out the, uh, uh, what's going, what's going on for replacement foundation, but you guys have stuck it over on the next paper on eight, um, under two.
It just moved it around.
Yeah. And I like the way you guys did that. It makes it cleaner and easier to interpret.
I literally can't take any credit for that. It's all from the chapter, not the guidelines. Does that answer your questions?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so I, the maximum total footprint, that's new language, or it might have been said somewhere else, but it's new to this section. May not be expanded to a size greater than 800 square feet or 30% larger than the footprint that existed on January 1st, 89, whichever is greater. It all deals with expanding the non-conformities. Everybody's good with that. When state talks about legally existing non-conformities and accessory structures. But don't need to set that requirement. Everybody good with C? Am I going too fast?
No.
Okay. Then there was CI. Structures located less than 75 feet from the nor, normal high water line of a water body. Mean, expand to size greater than 1,000 square feet or 35% larger than the footprint that existed as of January 1st, 89. Then II, in addition to the limitations in the above paragraphs for structures that are legally non-conforming due to their location within, within the resource protection districts. Goes on to talk 250 feet from the normal high water line. I won't read the whole thing.
In that section there is a sub-paragraph, it says, it, the limitations of sub-paragraphs, in addition to the limitations in sub-paragraphs wanted to, let it sub-paragraph to.
Yes, it is. So it should just say one. I wonder what it was supposed to be referring to. Good catch. And then D, an approved plan for expanding a non-conforming structure must be recorded by the applicant with the registry of deeds within 90 days of the approval. Again, that's boilerplate. Is everybody good with that one? And then there's the foundation one that
The last section of that, the municipal review authority.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, ultimately, isn't that the planning board? Should I don't, Ed, do you?
Yeah, if you want to say.
It's all planning board. Board of appeals, here's an appeal, would then they become the review authority or ultimately do they force the planning board to issue the permit?
No, so they can, they, those work that do it on that.
Okay.
If they overturn the appeal.
So leaving that language, it would be better.
Yeah.
So leaving it as a municipal review authority?
Right.
Okay. And then foundations. Number two. Everybody good with that one? So, page nine, third, third paragraph down. It references in accordance with section 15. Are, a lot of these I went through and double-checked to make sure these sections are like what they're supposed to be. I can't remember if I did for this one or not. But I'll make sure to go back and double-check that before this is finalized. I think most of this was the same except for the second part of A, there's some language added in.
Need to be insensitive to folks' time, but also sensitive to folks' time. Uh, if everybody's had this in hand at least a week for hard copy.
I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure like how thoroughly you want to be.
Rather than going change by change, we'll see if it's okay.
Yeah.
Page by page, if folks don't have questions, we'll keep moving. And then if we can read these notes, I know like on page 12, there's another next note where there might be something for members of the board to consider.
Okay.
And take advice on.
No, I like that.
So if we can do that, other than that, we're on page 10 and we've got 70 pages to go, so.
No, I think that's fantastic. I am never sure like how people want to. So one of the bigger changes that was brought to my attention when we had the, um, the, the guy that covered this from the D P come present was they changed on page 10, they changed it from floor area and volume to footprint. So you'll see those changes because that's easier to calculate than floor area and volume. I just want to point out that one thing. If everybody's good with that, in the next page, there's really not substantial changes on that one either. But I think the note on page 12 would be the next. Um, consistent with the statute, then immediately following exception may be adopted at the end of section 12E3 above if the municipality wishes to grandfather certain contiguous lots that were conforming and under the same ownership at this, at the time lot size and shore frontage requirements were increased beyond those in sub-paragraph E3A.
It'd be of a recommendation.
Okay.
I think the board's intended direction after the last meeting was to allow folks to develop responsibly and not put extra regulations in. So I think maybe in turn, let me know, but the intent to grandfather somebody in would be what I think the general public may expect, at least the board's perception of.
Okay, yeah, that was kind of what I got based on our conversation at the last meeting. So that said, I think this note can be taken out if you all are good with that. The next big change would be removing the paragraph at the bottom of 12. And, um, 13. That was a change by the state. I don't know.
Our comprehensive plan is about 20 years old.
Okay.
So that would be
The
A document to
To reference.
Hang a hat on. And then the municipal legislative body, obviously, I guess if they endorse to end the ordinance, then great, but to the best of my knowledge, there's not anything on active record to these effects.
Okay.
Our site review order in talks with some of the components anyway.
Okay. And then there's an added sentence about the 100-year flood plain. Uh, and the note, there, these areas usually consist of forested wetlands, abutting water bodies and non-forested wetlands. I don't know that that's I mean, is everybody good with that coming out? And then the next one, municipalities may also include the following other areas which have been recommended for protection in the comprehensive plan. Oh, is that what you were talking about?
Okay.
And none of that is So the next note would be, I think, 16, right before the table of land uses. It defines a term of functionally water-dependent. Um, I'm hesitant though, that's defined in definitions as well, includes a diverse group of uses ranging from large industrial uses. Only you all read it.
You're saying water dependence is under the definitions, is there?
I saw it.
Water. It says.
I thought I remember stealing it.
It, it is actually, if you go to page 79, it needs to be folded up, the rest of that functionally water-dependent uses, depending use. It's a bit old.
So, are you all good with me removing this? No, you don't want to do anything different than like the boilerplate language from the chapter 1,000 guidelines?
Okay.
So the table of land uses, um, I have to be honest, I didn't compare line by line with what you had before. I need to fix the formatting on it. Um, is there anything that jumps out to anybody or is there any areas that look like I don't know, vastly different?
Just basically something that you took out of the chapter 1,000, right?
Yeah.
And then the
Sorry, in that table, I'm trying to leave a side of it, the oh, yeah, I guess there is, sorry.
What's that?
The abbreviations, it's just above it by page number.
Yes. And then the notes section, um, I think when I converted your original one, the original ordinance from PDF to a Word document, it got a little messed up. So the notes are like, they appear wildly different, but I don't think they're, they really really are. There's a couple of notes or a couple, couple of notes to go over at the bottom of the notes, the footnote section. Item 17 in its entirety should be deleted from table one of the municipality. It lets not to regulate pier, stocks, wards, bridges and other structures and uses extending over or below the normal high water line. Would it be correct to assume that you guys don't want to elect not to regulate that?
So these are docks in the river. What are the notes of? Just the board one review or have code reviewed in terms of the river with length, things like that. Or live and let live.
I think, but let it go.
Do you, does, how is it in the old ordinance? I didn't notice.
It's blank in the table. The old table, 17 in there and there's no review authority. The old table seventeen in there and there's no review authority.
Oh. So that would be a change to to leave this in would be like different from
Be added regulation. Anybody having thoughts on regulating docks or piers?
I mean, isn't that essentially it's just a Kineback, right?
And sandy.
Okay.
Or mill stream.
Oh, okay. I was thinking, yeah.
Usually it's not a problem until it's a problem and usually there's so. I'm good with the way it was before.
So leave it out.
Consensus, leave out regulation of docks, piers.
There's getting to be more and more of them around. And whose property are they putting the docks in here going? Isn't that state property?
I thought that is a bridge water owned a certain, to a certain elevation. Is that accurate?
I don't know that.
Like under FERC.
Under what?
Um, the federal.
Damn regulators.
Yeah, yeah.
I wouldn't know that, so I don't.
Un- under that, don't they just um pay the landowner for when it floods?
I'm not, I'm really not sure. I'm not as, this is not, that's not something I have dealt with. Um, I'm not really familiar with it. I can look into that. It, are you saying that you think it should be regulated by Nordlock?
I think it should be regulated by the state if they're gonna put it in a state property. Okay, that makes any sense. My understanding that the state owns the the rivers and waterways and things like that.
That's correct. But so you'd be talking about so um preservation of na- nature, I guess. You want to docks all up and down the river, you could regulate the width of a dock going out into the water. Not necessarily the dock that's over the water, but the actual dock that will extend from town property. We've not done that in the past.
But I think there's more and more docks showing up. Like going just right here into the very town, we got what, two, three, four? Okay, we just had one, one of the river road put in. We got the ones for plane. We have, you know, there's multiple right here close. And I believe it's that's putting it on state property when you put a dock out there.
So you're not asking for added regulation?
No, but it's something that should be state regulated.
It may very well be. I'm not.
I think it's just obstruction of the free flow of traffic. It can't be like a dock over the middle of the river.
Yeah.
You were sticking one out there a couple hundred feet, probably someone would pay.
Right.
Get a visit from somebody.
Not to get off tangent, but I think we're now irrelevant. You want the state to put in a policy.
I It it would surprise me that there isn't a policy in already involved or out there for states. Cause that's their property.
Probably is if you really get a, you know, big one out there, I imagine.
So just like going out there on a four wheel trail and putting up a campsite.
So as far as this goes, um.
It's not gonna be moved out.
Okay, so it's okay. Everybody's on board. Leave that out. All right. I love it. Next note, a person performing any of the following activities shall require a permit from the DEP. If the activity occurs in, on, over adjacent any freshwater wetlands, great ponds, river streams, brooks, dredging, bulldozing, removing or displacing soil. I mean, those are all pretty obvious. I don't think that I need to read this whole thing. Is everybody good with removing that? Yeah, the back.
So you're talking about that's when somebody's gonna have to go get a PBR, right?
Yes.
I think it may be good in there because people don't understand it. They have to get a PBR. That's just my opinion. I think people kind of get lost in the weeds whenever you explain to them you have to go see the DEP for PBR whether it's uh, PBR four or eight or whatever it it can be. I think it's probably out of the the reference.
I think you're probably right. That makes sense. I will take out the part that says nope. I'll leave it in and I'll make it so that the formatting matches.
And we also have added language that allows the statute, the ordinance to evolve with any statute changes, regulation changes at the state level. And we want it
Yeah.
To change with this. So it would be pursuant to thirty-eight MRSA section four ADC or regulations enforced, something like that at the time of application. There's gotta be something that evolves or other than that, we're tying our hands with these four items. If statute says we're gonna add another one or take another one away, then we have to back modify an ordinance. So it should be the evolving language regards to the statute. And then includes but not limited, may include but not be limited to the laws. The other, the other thing to consider is maybe we don't include it in the ordinance. Maybe we include it in an ordinance and pack it. When somebody comes in and asks to see the shoreline zone in ordinance, you have blue text within the document that has some of these user-friendly notations like this.
Seen something like that before, like it had to do with like removing hazard trees. There's a, a proper way of doing that and some towns have a handout that they supply people.
But even if we had a linked document that was in a PDF on the website, people could grasp just a lot as opposed to putting this in.
Getting it out.
If it's a capital letter, you can't change it to lowercase unless we take it to town.
Yeah, makes sense. So.
But I completely get the value of that.
Me too.
It's a matter of do you want to legislate it?
Right. So leave it in for now and
I would recommend removing it from the ordinance.
Okay.
And we'll make a note on administration side that if they move organs as a doctor, we're gonna put this in the ordinance handle or something like that. Cause there's a lot of stuff in here. I think that's right that we take for granted on our side, but folks may need this or that.
Move. Know what they need to do. For the next note, the municipality should review the land use standards contained herein to determine whether they were result on a scale of development that's compatible with existing development or with future desired scale of development, if not more restricted land uses may be adopted by the municipality. I think we talked about this last time. That's not something that you guys want to do, is that correct? We just wanted to basically stay with the state. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next note on page twenty-four, in a district equivalent to general development district that is served by municipal water and sewer systems, this department may approve a municipal shoreline zoning ordinance that provides for greater residential densities been set forth in section fifteen A one above. I don't know if that's, that's probably not. Everybody's good with taking that out? All right, next. Municipalities may include provisions for cluster housing within the shoreline zone, provided that the overall dimensional requirements include frontage and lot area per dwelling unit uh, are met when determining whether dimensional requirements are met. Only land area within the shoreline zone may be considered. That's more advisory. Is everybody good with taking that out?
Right, it's not a problem under like an ADU. So the state's already put out maybe.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, next one's natural resource protection act. Uh, requires the DEP to designate areas of significant wildlife habit habitat permitting under the natural resource protection act for activities adjacent to significant wildlife habitat areas may require greater sapback. Contact your local DEP office to see additional permitting is required. So that kind of goes along the lines of the other one you were just talking about. So that's probably something that should be taken out, but it would be useful in a handout. Yeah. Yeah. Everybody on to the next one? I don't see a B. I don't either. It must be this with us. It doesn't seem. All right, I will check that. Reference, um, I think it's talking about the retaining law. The paragraph. I went to number five on the next page. I think it's talking about that.
Five D, yes.
What's that?
Five D, the total height of the wall, so it can't be, can't be more than
Yeah.
You have a note on page twenty-six. It says the same thing. So probably this.
Yeah. I wonder, I left him an note or something.
So from a streamlined perspective, I would just say delete the note. Because this is as least restrictive as the regulation can be. And the board has said we don't want to be more restrictive. Rather than try to, once we get rid of these notes and edits, I think it'll be easy to see the formatting adjustments and outline style. Make sure.
Do you want me to skip over them? Or?
By administration.
Do you all want me to skip over the notes or is it, do you find it useful to go through them?
But skip over.
All right. So we are on to page twenty-eight under C one.
Well, that whole section is gonna be excluded. Section C.
Sections C, okay.
Is it not regulated?
Yep.
Yep.
Wow, there's a lot in that section. Now campground. On page thirty. Nothing different there. Uh, individual campsites is the next change, um. I don't think, it's just adding when individual campsites are proposed in a lot that contains another principal use and or structure, a lot must contain the minimum lot. Dimensional requirements for the principal structure. Basically, it can't be undersized lot with a non-conforming use to establish a campsite. And there's nothing on thirty-one or thirty-two. Well, on page thirty-three, it's talking about signs. I don't know what it said.
Um, sorry, can we bounce back to thirty-one?
Sure.
At the top of that page is a note.
Yes.
About nameboard pesticides in the middle of subsurface ways and parking areas. It's that, that place that we need to circle back at a different point in time.
I am not sure. I can check. So it's either out of place in the chapter one thousand guidelines or it's left, actually, it looks like it's probably left over from your original.
So that's, we're gonna strike it.
Yes. I can double check this. I think I just highlighted the note. It's not red. So it's not something that I put in there.
And then at the bottom of thirty-one, it looks like it's just, I'll take from that.
Yeah, it's all from that.
But it's not because this is implying that roads and barriers, it then it says the high water line of water bodies. When it could just be a singular water body. I think the singular is the appropriate answer, not plural. So we add, we pluralize all of that stuff. I think it all should be singular.
Okay.
Or maybe it's of any water body tributary and or upland edge of a wetland.
I think that would make.
But I think we're toasting ourselves if it gets down to something technical and
I think so too.
Legal, you're into oxycodone business there. And while I'm at it, I guess I'll bounce back up the parking areas. Uh, so that's F three on page thirty-one. Determining the appropriate size of proposed parking facilities, the typical parking space is approximately ten feet. Well, is that nine feet, eleven feet? What's approximate? Well, is there any reason why we wouldn't just put a fixed expectation of a parking spot?
I think, isn't that regulated?
I don't know.
Somehow else? I mean, aside from shoreline zoning, yeah, I agree with you. It shouldn't be approximately. Isn't it also on the site? That references parking and.
Yes, for residential, yeah.
So how do you, I'm gonna handle that. Do you want me to take out the approximately part or uh, see what you have for the site plan review ordinance?
Whichever structure will prevail, right? But I would think that you'd say a minimum of no less, no less than ten feet wide and twenty feet long, something to that effect. Rate that minimum for folks. You put approximately, it might be the difference. A foot's a foot. If they build an extra foot closer to the water, then they can be. Not to add to the bureaucracy, but. What it is.
Yeah, it's weird that that was. In there like that. So it says, under three B, internal travel aisles approximately twenty feet wide. There again.
That's no less than twenty feet wide. Page thirty three, that sounds like an eighth of bitch really, remind you format in that table. Of making a table out of that, so. Uniform.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So under signs, um, H two, I don't know where you guys. Had, so I didn't take anything. Out of this, it looks like it just added in two signs per premises. Did, was a number not regulated? Before, or? Oh, it is on number four, it says, um. Oh, that's for signs relating to that, I'm thinking that's passing, I don't know. Some towns' signs are kind of a hot topic issue, I don't know if this is gonna be impactful, is what I'm getting at.
We always say we don't regulate times, and so this is new to me, but.
Yeah, I don't really know why that would be under shoreline zoning.
Preservation. So this is the minimum that we have to have in here.
Yeah.
Well, I guess there's not much to say about it then.
One water runoff, there's a note here. That's probably something that's covered under your. Site line review ordinance. And then the next note, um. Again, that's. Not anything with. New, it's just talking about the rig order disposal rules. Anybody see anything that they wanna? Go into, am I going too fast, anything?
On page thirty six, number one. Records document about minority utilization guideline. That's one of those things that can evolve in regulation. It should have a clause in there, or the. It, I don't know, no.
Or amended.
Standard like the, yeah, thank you, something like that, that more to overtime, so we don't have to go back here.
I'm assuming the, um. Grazing is not really. A thing. That needs to be filed with the planning board. Talking about grazing, like.
Oh, in number five.
Yeah.
So. You know, obviously, if that baseline language.
Right.
Then that's kind of what we need to do. And we do have farm limits on rivers, a lot of it. Maybe now not active, some of it is, but.
Alright, so now in timber harvesting statewide standards. This is all new, anything that's read and underlined is new. This is all stuff that's. Changed due to the new chapter one thousand guidelines. I think, though, that the three options. In the original one, I think just the way it is presented is different. Is there anything that anybody? See's in here that they want to go over? So on page forty six, number eight definitions unless otherwise provided here in the section N incorporates. By reference. The definitions contained in the main forest service rules, chapter twenty. That should probably say, or as amended. As well.
And on page fifty eight, there's a note about retaining a present point system based on twenty five by twenty five foot plots. I know you're ahead of bounds, what do you see? People going with this little new. Regulation, or is they on this twenty five by twenty five?
We're still on the, um. I would think it's four to twenty five on five, actually twenty five by ten. So, opening, they go by the twenty five by ten. And the two hundred fifty square foot open canopy opening. And. I haven't seen the twenty five by ten yet. Anywhere else.
Twenty five by twenty five is less restrictive or just to. Actually, a bit restrictive, and this more restrictive, twenty five by twenty five, I believe so.
I think going twenty five by fifty is less restrictive, and makes it easier to. It can actually go up and count the points basically easier.
I think that was another one of the things that, um, Colin Clark from the DEP talked about in his presentation, and that was one of the things that. Changed the canopy opening size from the previous version of this.
So it used to be two fifty, then what is it now?
Um. I don't think I'm on the right.
On page top of fifty eight, it's twenty five by fifty.
Okay. Yes. Yeah, because this is, it gives you an option to retain your present point system that's based on the twenty five by twenty five foot. Lots, so that's.
So the idea is that the twenty five by twenty five may be more restrictive than the twenty five by fifty, does the board have a position on that? So proceed with the twenty five by fifty as the statement on standard?
Oh, the same, yeah.
Yeah.
The. Section P hazard trees, storm there is freezing, dead tree removal is another section that's newly added.
Pages sixty four and sixty five, it goes on S to U, they're going to change section to C.
Yeah, I struggled with fixing this, because there was a whole section, I need to fix that. There was a whole section that didn't apply to you guys because of the great pond thing.
So we worry to remove that?
Yes. I am not sure, though. If, so there's language about rivers and streams flowing into great ponds and. I know that, like you said, you're in the north pond watershed, so I don't know if there's anything flowing, there's not anything flowing directly. Into, okay.
I think there's actually only one par same town that's in the north pond watershed.
I know it's a very, very small.
Correct.
Area.
No waters on that.
Okay.
And on page sixty seven, there's a note about. Municipality intends to take independent enforcement actions related to the contractor certification requirement.
You want to do something like that, then that would be something that, um. Had to be voted on, is, so like something like that, if there was some type of forestry issues, and I'm going to take care of the issue. So if you wanted to handle it in-house, and you guys would have to vote on it, adopt it, I believe. Does that sound about right?
Can you repeat that, I couldn't hear you real.
So, uh, if the municipality intends to take independent enforcement actions related to the contractor certification requirements. So that's something that would have to be adopted by the municipality, right? It's not something that you can put in the ordinance.
Not overly familiar with that, but based on. The paragraph below it, it looks. Yeah.
If we want to regulate, we add that paragraph five.
Right, yeah.
There's just earthwork, right? So saying anybody that does earthwork has to be DEP certified with national land.
Right, yeah.
They've always been there and always. I'm not sure if the old, you guys' old. Guidelines have it or not, but. The new, what everybody follows is it has to be DEP certified work in shoreline to do any type of report.
Okay. So that's, you're saying it's, that's the way it's done anyway?
Right. Well, it looks like this would be a new regulation that we have, um. From here in town, but if you were going to perform excavation work within the shoreline, then you would have to have certification through DEP. What are the thoughts on that? That is an added regulation.
It seems like it would be useful, but that would be another. Thing that you would have to.
Where the other places on work, that's, this is kind of how it goes, you have to present it, um, depends on you folks on how you want to deal with it. If you want to make contractors go and get DEP certified, is it going to do any type of shoreline excavation? It's a one day course, and where they go and just learn best management practices, and they get a certification, so it's not like. Um, an impossible course or something that's overly difficult to get.
Is there a list of those contractors available?
On the, uh, there is a site, I don't know off the top of my head, but if you do go to the site, um, it does tell you who are the contacts that are going to be certified working.
Yeah, I'm right there.
What do you think, Tim? You look like you have an opinion.
What? Personally, I think it'd be a good idea. That's just. Me.
I kind of, I tend to agree with you, I mean.
Our whole point is we're supposed to be. Our whole point is we're supposed to be protecting our. Natural resources.
A good idea to what? And the town regulated on hire these guys.
To have to require a contractor be certified to work in the shoreline zoning.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that would be.
That I think is a good idea.
I just, I just read some of the contracts.
Oh, no, I wasn't looking at it that way. No, I was looking at it as a.
I was just here to see if we had a volume of contracts.
Yeah, you're already, I've heard about something that would. A few years ago, they had a green, after green tall, they put on a. A little class like in a bunch of them. But they.
The schedule online, it looks like. Once a month on average, there's a training in Augusta.
You can also do it online too, so you can do it at home as well.
Oh, okay.
So is everybody in favor of? Leaving this in and requiring? That contractors become certified with the D P to work in shoreline zones?
I thought it was that way anyway.
Without a vote of the board, do you think that the town should require that contractors doing groundwork? In the shoreline should be certified through D D P with a one day course?
Yeah. I think yes.
Yes.
Yeah, Margaret. Uh, by consensus of the board, without a vote, we'll leave that in. And we'll circle back to that.
Richard, I was, I was on mute.
No, no problem. Uh, are you agreeable to requiring excavation contractors to have D P certification? A one day course?
In shoreline zoning.
Yep, I am. I heard Gene about that, so thanks.
I thought you almost had to do that anyways. Maybe that's individual towns.
You've got a lot of towns, but then if you're getting grant money, which we don't see a lot of in the shoreline here, but if you get grant money, then they expect that you're going to be certified as well.
It may be possible, well, it may be a good idea to include like that link on the website or. That way.
I think after next Wednesday, select board meeting, when we start talking about planning for productivity, it would be something that.
Right, would be useful.
We'll get it out there right now, especially if it's online. Or even Tuesday enough for folks to be able to.
Change is not substantial. It's just changing ground floor footprint. The next note, whether an administrative spirit of appeal is decided on. An appellate basis or de novo basis, or whether an enforcement asking is appealed to by the Board of Appeals shall be the decision of the municipal. Municipality through specific ordinance language. The department is not mandating one alternative over the other. If the municipality chooses. Appeals procedures differ from those in section sixteen H. It is recommended that assistance be sought from legal counsel. Do you know how it was prior? To these revisions? How if there is an appeal, like how it was handled? Doesn't it go to the Board of Appeals?
Yes.
And I don't see any changes from that. Maybe it's just saying that like. That's a possibility. So is everybody good with me removing that note?
I think that's reasonable. Nothing else is redlined in the section.
Right, exactly. I think that's the way that you guys have always done it has been the Board of Appeals and that's. Just fine, but no reason to do. Change it.
Page seventy one, I N D, or the codes enforcement officer everywhere else, it's code enforcement officer. It's not that, that's pretty.
Have you heard any other towns that have some type of? Um, section or language that says? The current enforcement officer has the ability to refer the application to the planning board.
I generally don't. Deal with shoreline zoning all that much. I know one town where. Neither. The code enforcement officer or the planning board feels all that comfortable making the decision, so they defer it all to the D P. I think that's probably not what you're asking.
No, like the situation is kind of something I'm running into in another town is. Um, they're trying to find a loophole in order to reconstruct. A basically abandoned house that's not performing, that's less than twenty five feet from the water. But there is a loophole essentially that lets them go to the code enforcement office or if. The reconstruction left less than, less than fifty percent of the structure. But what's happening is there's no good language as to what really fifty percent of market value is on an abandoned house that's missing walls. Missing floors, et cetera, et cetera. So going through lawyers, going through D P, um, you know, there's, it's up in the air. And for something like that, it'd be much better if it was, if the code enforcement officer had something to say, I'm going to be um, refer us to the planning board. For review and to make a determination.
Let them be the bad guy.
Right, but you know, it, it makes for, you know. More, more individuals of all that can see things besides a code enforcement officer.
Well, the way that I see it is that. You're kind of directed by the planning board. I mean. And. In towns that have like more robust zoning besides shoreline zoning. It's the planning board that oversees. That so essentially like if you. Pass the authority or defer to them in. Your interpretation. Of the ordinance, I think that makes. I think it makes sense. But again, that may be something that. You want to like, you said you were to talk to the D P about this?
Oh, yeah, so I've already talked to a certain D P person you mentioned earlier, so. It's. Extremely difficult to figure out a market value on a structure that's run down that is on waterfront, but you can't use a waterfront. To include into the market value, so. Um, you know, people are trying to find a loophole of, well, I want this property, I don't want to move it and, you know, there's a certain section, um, twelve, section twelve. Um, that says if you go to the code enforcement officer, if we can. Prove that it's less than fifty percent of market value. Then. The code enforcement officer is the one that's supposed to, you know. Review the application and permit it. But, you know, it's so up in the air as to what that market value is and what D P ain't talking to Colin calls, I really. Really don't know either, you know, based on what they're trying to give.
Yeah, that's a key situation. Are you suggesting adding language in here to?
It just gives the C E O authority to say, um, based on an application that they review that they have the authority to. Send it to the planning board for review as well.
How does, are you guys? How do you feel about that?
Well, isn't it, isn't it already like in our ordinance, it has, if it's in shoreline zoning, it has to go to the but planning board.
Well, there's this one section that lets, that's a loophole that lets them go through the code enforcement officer and bypasses the planning board. So that's why I say this, that we need to automatically go to D P. Because this one is, the property I'm talking about has gone through many planning board meetings and has already been fooled upon. And many people keep buying the property, keep trying to get it pushed through, so they're trying to exploit it. So.
Did you say that in section twelve, like what, the non-conformity?
Yes, non-conformity, if you go down second twelve, C, something, it's in there.
So is that where you're suggesting adding the language or under?
Well, under the permitting application part, we're seeing here that we're talking about, it would be great that if we had something there that says, you know. The code enforcement officer upon review of the application has the authority to defer this to the planning board or review the decision. Hey, sorry.
I was on seventy four, but I think what you're talking about is something different.
Well, we're um. Talking about permanence, right? So you had my pastor, that's why, that's why I jumped in. So permanent application, so we were talking about it on sixty seven right question, then we jumped to your page there, so that's why I bring it up.
Yeah, I think you brought it up under code enforcement, um. I think that would, if everybody wants that, and here it would definitely fit under code enforcement rather than. Non-conformity, which is what I think spurred. I.
It, it keeps people from trying to exploit the loophole here in this town and, like you said, brings.
Makes sense. Yeah. Is everybody in agreement on that? Charlotte?
Yes.
I am.
Sure, yes. I don't know. Sounds like maybe you don't plan would get into a lawsuit with that.
Well, the planning board is, should be the one ruling on it anyway.
Yeah.
Not the code enforcement. In shoreline zoning, the planning board really is the one that's supposed to.
Oversee that.
Review the.
Yeah.
Application.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, if you go to pages seventeen and eighteen on the land uses in the shoreline zone, it shows you where. The planning board is and the code enforcement officers.
Right.
I understand and appreciate where it's coming from. However.
You think that's enough?
The sense of due process and then. Equitable treatment. And. To determine a fair market value or improvement based upon market value or value change. Then you could do it for everybody, so then you might as well just shift that kind of the loophole over to the planning board permanently anyway. Uh, I. I would recommend against it, sorry to put the heat on the kitchen, but. There's a board of appeals and if they don't like the ruling of the code enforcement officer. Rather than add five more individuals plus consultants and attorneys to it, allow them to appeal to the board of appeals and if they don't like that, they go to the spirit part.
Okay.
Um, it, that's the process and if people want to try to exploit the loophole and let them and. It is, we're going to have to defend somebody, I think is what it amounts to if it gets to something like this. So. I get that maybe you don't want to be the bad guy, but.
It's not the bad.
The buck's got a strong family.
Yeah.
And it's probably better. Served to have a. Impartial. Civil servant as it is to have. No disrespect, a board of five elected officials deciding my own. Controversial. Or that's only one most.
But isn't that what we're here for?
That's what I said.
Yes, but when something gets controversial to the point where a public servant, a civil servant can't. Doesn't feel comfortable processing that application. That's why this right now, I just, I have an awful hard time if the ordinance says. It should be processed through this authority than it should be processed through that authority. And one could perceive a violation of due process by being moved in that process. To another step of the process or to another hearing.
Do you have anything you want to put in, Margaret?
I, I would lean towards. The planning board, it's, um, I feel more comfortable. Of a one individual. Um, versus five versus uh, the planning board. It's not in favor of one individual. I like it. I like these coming to the planning board and we have a commit consensus and a vote.
So that begs the question, do you want to review table one for land uses in the shoreline zone for review authority?
I think I'd feel better about this because I understood the loophole a little bit. More, do you remember where that was under section twelve, you said?
So it's under non-conforming structures and then under replacement. So let's do the replacement on construction.
Page nine.
Yeah, page nine.
Page nine. So if you read into that, um. So you have, which is removed, destroyed regardless of the cause by fifty percent of the market value of the structure. And to the next page here. So it gives you a timeline, right?
Eighteen months.
That they have to do that and that's through the planning board and then if you go down further, it should be. So if you go down to the next paragraph down, it says again fifty percent, it gives them a timeline of less than, um, but it should give them a timeline of a year. But it goes to the code enforcement officer for a permit.
So wouldn't it make more sense to add? As determined. By, I. I see what Richard is saying about adding this clause in here. I think maybe a better approach would be to. Have this say something along the lines of. Um. By more than fifty percent of the market value of the structure as determined by. And.
But this is for less than fifty percent.
This, this also gives it a time limit of a year.
Right, so. This gives somebody to, to come to me and say, I've got, I've, my place has been destroyed, I spent only a couple of months. Here's a permit, I want you to permit this, even though it's fifteen feet from the water. And not go to the planning board because they're going to make me move it back to the seventy five feet if I go to the planning board. But then you have the problem that I'm running into is what really is the market value of that property and nobody can delete.
But if it's, if it's that, that a shape, it's been more than a year.
Oh, I'm saying if it's been less than a year, so if it's been a couple of months and. Let's say. Um, let's say it was just a bad looking camp anyway, but it was never torn down or anything, but. Now there is something that fell, you know, let's say a wall did fall down or whatever have you. Um, and now they're looking to. Replace it by less than fifty percent of the market value. And they're trying to redo either foundations or whether they're trying to do walls or whether they're trying to do. Um, interior space that also includes the market value. It's much easier, in my opinion, it's their way of trying to exploit the loophole is this and it's easier if. It was, in my opinion, it was seen through the. The planning board, that way the planning board could say, you know, we don't agree with this assessment and it should come to a setting like.
I think there needs to be a mechanism besides you and. Honestly, besides the planning board that is. That determines. If fifty percent. Has been destroyed or less has been destroyed, fifty percent of the market value or less has been destroyed, and I think that's something that honestly. Should come. It, it, that's so subjective.
And that's in talking to Colin, that's where he and I were, were running into an issue and trying to figure out this.
That situation that you're describing, is that here in Norde?
No, it's not. I hope it's not.
Right.
I think in one of our ordinances, I may have. It states that a variance can only be granted by the planning board or the Board of Appeals. If they come to us for a variance and we turn it down, then that can appeal to them.
I don't think this is a variance situation, though. I think it's just rebuilding back what previously existed before it got damaged.
So in that paragraph, any conforming structure which is located less than required, is that back? It says if a permit is obtained from the code enforcement officer within one year. Should we just change that to planning board? Make the planning board want that authority.
Why don't we do that? Okay, that'd be the simplest way. Okay.
Fair enough.
Yep.
And I can tell you that in the past, the on occasion when things aren't controversial or they're low impact, the planning board is commonly voted to refer it back to code enforcement for final permitting and approval. Whether that's proper or appropriate, I but that's been a past practice of this year.
But we, we don't give it back until we discuss it pretty thoroughly.
Correct.
Yeah, because it goes through the planning board and then the planning board would then authorize it to be moved on to the, so it puts us you know, puts us in that conversation, be, you know. Because we give the directive to the, right, right, Richard, is that we approve it going to the code enforcer.
Yes.
So.
Okay. So page seventy-four, um, code enforcement, with a five to C, uh, I removed on a biannual basis a summary of this record, the complete record of all essential transactions of the office from the code enforcement officer shall be submitted to the Director of Bureau of Land. I guess that was removed. Saying I don't know if that was. Apparently it was a thing. Um. On page seventy-five, there's a note about the minimal penalties. Oh, yes. I think it's just. Everybody's good with that, not to definitions.
So they changed the maximum penalty because it was ten thousand dollars.
Um.
In shoreline.
I don't remember seeing that part redlined. According to this, and this is not, so this isn't in reds, this isn't new. This is what was in the ordinance anyways. So I don't know, this.
Right in there, so there you go. So the minimum penalty, not the maximum, but when it's in shoreline, it's ten thousand. Oh, it looks like just the note isn't correct there. But we're gonna keep that as a footnote in our account of the back document that we would want to go back. Right? Thirty-eight. One navigation. So title thirty-eight A doesn't even have a section forty-four fifty-two. That's what cited in the note. Thirty A dot thirty-eight.
Oh, it's supposed to be thirty A?
Yeah, in that last line on page seventy-five. Thirty dash A, MRSI, section forty-four fifty-two. That's the same one that's cited in number four. In section forty-four two. And that's the enforcement of land use laws and border links is where sites at ten thousand dollars in the resource protection area.
Yeah, so just the note is wrong.
I don't know, page eighty-one, I think you can strike that definition of the dot four convergence.
Are we ready to take a vote on the issue? I think that was.
I would advise against taking a vote.
Yeah, I bet it.
We really need to deal with this document again, make sure it's all looking the way that it looks. Um, we'll zero in on, I think there's some sidebar notes on areas that we talked about tonight specifically, so that we can review those when they're drafted, as soon as we get the next draft through, um, we get that out to you, and then at your meeting in January, then I think it's
Makes sense.
Um, one of the more fine.
So, yep, I think that's a good idea. How would you like me to do the, um, what a good name for, I can't remember what you called it. The document that left the notes in.
We can take care of that. If we just receive the document, a Word document, then we'll take care of that in hours after the fact.
Okay.
Because there may be some other things that staff wants to put in.
Okay.
I just think some of that information is in your notes here, so would be helpful for users.
Yeah. Any other business?
We need to go back to living business, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Oh, even though he didn't, okay. Are you, that's good. Okay, um, you're welcome. Uh, it's January, it's the.
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday. And we need to discuss action on the proposed subdivision of the Coach and merging counts one and two in Redcoats Pass subdivision.
Uh, in your package, you have a draft letter, um, or draft of, of buildable, if you will, um, that has been submitted by the owner of lots one and two at Redcoats Pass, Andrew Davis. Um, he would like to build on lot one. Um, we have the subdivision in your package, so that's a triangle of lot on the east side of the subdivision. Um, then he owns a lot just to the west of that. Um, the lot that he wants to build on, that he has started building on, um, not known, um, is not buildable under the terms of the subdivision. Uh, in that subdivision, a buildable lot must be one acre. And that lot that he really wants is one point four one acres. So rather than trying to adjust the minimum uh lot sizing in that subdivision, which could have uh an adverse impact on a butter's or other lot owners, um, he has elected to suggest removing the line between lot one and lot two and making that one large combined lot. Um, so it, it allows him to build on lot one, um, it increases that lot just the size of it by that one point four one acres. And I don't believe that it is adverse at all in terms of the subdivision itself, and in fact, it is more restricted um, because you're blocking those two lots. So he has asked for you to review the requests. Um, his attorney has submitted this document that's in your packet, um, and he would like them to be, the lots to be merged and then uh renumbered technically to be just lot one, um, which does require approval because it is a subdivision. I can take questions or whatnot. Like I said, he has already started construction, it was a severe oversight, um, but as soon as he was made aware, like, um, then they started developing this plan for us.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
No.
Is that also being the truth deep in the road there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, a- and the other complicating factor is, is that previous staff, uh, issued a permit for it without having to review the subdivision, the companies in the subdivision. So I think this is a, a reasonable resolution for all.
Yeah, I think you'd make it, you know, the rest of subdivision worth even more.
So the appropriate motion would be a, a motion to sign a planning board approval to remove lot line between lots one and two as depicted on Redcoats Pass subdivision recorded on the Somerset County Register of Dates and Plan File two thousand four dash one zero eight.
I'll make that a motion.
I need a second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Any more discussion?
Any more discussion? Oh. John?
Yes.
Chucky?
Yes.
Margaret?
Yes.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Yes, that's everyone.
So we need to discuss this thing more?
No, that was what you just, I had given you the plan so you could see where lots one and two were. And by signing that document that will be linked, it will then remove the line between lot one and two and allow me to say exhibit minimum of dollars in the location. Please wait.
If that can get complicated. That looks like quite a house you'd build with this.
This guy, he did this subdivision. Wanted to make these individual lots and these individual lots which only have the river and the railroad. And the ordinance says that they have to have access to it.
We can, you can go across the railroad, can you? Or right away, can you?
Um, well, whoever lot, these lots supposedly owns the corresponding lot down here. But.
I know, any, any other business?
We will have a regular meeting naturally in January.
Okay.
Second president. Mark?
All right. Adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.